Okay, great. Welcome everybody to the regularly scheduled Trumbull Conservation Commission meeting. It's Wednesday, August 30th at 7:00 PM. This has been our first meeting in a couple of months, so we have a lot of things to go over. Our last meeting was March. What was the date on that, Barbara? March?
March 29.
March 29. So I need to get a motion for
You don't have a quorum?
So, so I can't.
Oh, yeah.
So you can move on, and if they come in, then
Okay.
As long as you have five, you can approve them.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. I thought four was our quorum, but I guess not.
What do we do? Wait, you're right. It might be four. So you have seven, right?
Yeah, we have seven. Yeah.
And four. Sorry. Yes.
Four. Oh, that's okay.
Okay.
All right, good. So do I have, I know it's been a couple of months, but oh, there's John. All right. You know, we've got plenty. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from March?
I can't. I wasn't there, so.
Okay. Anybody like to make a motion to?
I'll make a motion if I was there.
I'll second.
Okay, everybody in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Those against? Nay. Okay. Great. So we will move on to yeah, so the only thing under I have under new business here is is actually our fiscal year is started, started July 1st, and I sent all of you a copy of the new budget. So as you can see from the budget week, we did get, the most interesting thing is that we did get the $12,000 again to continue the Thousand Trees for Trumbull initiative for this year. So we can discuss that. That's actually in number one of old business. So we actually, the budget we used, I want to say 96% of our last fiscal year.
Mel, I'm sorry, I have a question. I, maybe I just don't know how to read this, but when I looked at it, I thought it was 12,000 for the trees.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's 12,000. Did I say something else?
I thought you said 10. My mistake.
No, that's okay. Yeah, it's 12. So they gave us 12,000 again for the trees, 3,000 for community and public relations. We've already used 1,500 of that, and I'll show you what we use that on. It's for signage for a thousand trees in our project in Twin Brooks Park, which is pretty exciting. And then we have funding going forward for four people over the next year to attend a seminar. We have about $105 for each person and no, that's sorry, four members funds. Why does that say four members? It's two members, 105 times two. So it's two people can attend a seminar this year. And then we have dues for Connecticut Land Council and Inland Wetland. That's the khaki wic dues. So anyway, so that's our, our new budget for the upcoming fiscal year. And I just want to see if I can share with you the most recent project that is, has been going on this summer in Twin Brooks. Oh, let me see. If I can get the most recent one up for you. We have we have asked Don Watson to design a sign for us. Nope, that's not it. Can get that. Recent one here. I'm sorry for the delay, you guys. It's not it. Oh, maybe it's in Twin Brooks panel. There it is. There it is. There it is. Okay, there it is. All right. So now I will go back on here and share my screen, and then I will pull up the Twin Brooks panel. Okay, there you go. Sorry for the delay. So can you all see this? This is
Yes.
Apeck. So it's a mockup of a sign that's going to be, you know, a freestanding sign that you stand up and, you know, look at at Twin Brooks just before you go over the bridge from the Vietnam Bets Memorial into Twin Brooks. And I'm going to see if I can zoom in, and this will stay hopefully clear. So Don Watson has designed this. This is, this is called a bird's eye view of Twin Brooks. And we're calling this sign project, the Mosaic of biodiversity. And this came up in response to signage for our Thousand Trees project. So here's the map right here, which shows the Keystone Tree Walk, which is where is the first planting of our Thousand Trees Initiative. So in discussions with Dimitri about Twin Brooks and other projects that hopefully we can work on there, he suggested that having a sign like this, which you enter, so here you are here, you're coming into Twin Brooks from White Plains Road here. The sign is just before you go over the bridge, over the Paquonic. And the sign will give you a snapshot of all of the areas of interest in Twin Brooks. This is going to be planted this winter, the Pollinator Point, and it is right at the confluence of the Paquonic River and I think it's Booth Hill Brook comes in there. So you know, this, of course, is a project that we as a commissioner are you know, driving and working on this one. We also have money for to help support the purchase of seeds. This is a very large area. This will be kind of our, on the pollinator pathway. And we have some funds in our separate Thousand Trees Pollinator Pathway account that I got from Aquarian that we can start this project. So anyway, that's another stop along this you know, area of interest in Twin Brooks. The Water Edge buffers, of course, are being continue to be planted as the road has been, you know, changed around in Twin Brooks. The Heron Pond is still there. We also have a Pollinator Pathway. Dimitri planted pollinator species along the Veterans Walk there. And then a couple of other areas back here where we've got our wet meadow. This is an ecotone edge that it's kind of the border between a grassland and a forest edge. And this is areas where, you know, you have a lot of bird populations. There are ecotone edges all throughout the park here as you go from grassland into the, into the forest. And then woodland trails, so that the hiking trail. So this is in production now. We have, I'm gonna make it a little smaller just to show you the, we have text that was drafted by Dimitri and Matt, who works for him. That's going to be added to the sign. And then Linda Thomas, who is, works with Don Watson at Earthrise, is doing illustrations to highlight some of these areas in Twin Brooks. This it's a bald eagle, actually. I guess we've got this bird habitat over here where we've seen bald eagles kind of on a regular basis because it's got tree snags and a lot of woody debris on the ground. So that's an area of interest. As you go over the bridge, you can see the bird habitat. This is the Pollinator Point. And then these are Baltimore Orioles nesting in maple trees that were planted here along the edge. So this is a really cool project, I think, for us to become part of. We had talked about having some kind of ceremony at Twin Brooks, and they did already have the ribbon cutting, which kind of opened up Twin Brooks to the public. But to go forward and celebrate, you know, the Thousand Trees and some of these other projects, I think this would be a good thing for us to do in the spring. This sign should be done early this fall. And the parks department is going to put the sign in. They're going to, you know, create the holder for it, and it should be really nice. So so I just thought this was a really cool project. This is what the $1,500 went to, to get this project started with Don Watson, and then the, the rest of the money will come out of Parks and Recreation. Parks Department will pay for all the rest of the signage. So I just thought this was, this was kind of really cool. Of all of our parks, this one has the most diversity of ecosystems. And this is kind of a neat project to kind of celebrate all the work that's been done at Twin Brooks over the years. So I just wanted to share that with you. I can send this out to you guys so you can see it. But I just wanted to let you know where the, where the money was going for this. So this is Don Watson. It's been working on this over the summer.
Well, I love this. I love the sign so much. I'm wondering, you said Dimitri made a recommendation on the placement to be on the other side of the bridge from the park itself. Do you know why he chose that spot? I mean, I, like
Yeah.
Because I'm a walker. I walk in, so I go through that spot every, you know, four times a week, but a lot of people, they drive in, they go to the playground, they go to the, you know, they walk the sidewalks, whatever. But they may never cross the bridge to see that sign. And so I wonder why that placement was chosen.
That is a really good question, and I can I can pull up some of the pictures for that. Welcome to Twin Brooks. So the, the reason, I guess that was for, for one of the signs that, that was chosen because just what you said there, you know, it comes from the, the main entrance there. However, this template for this can be and will be made in duplicate and put into the kiosks.
Okay, so it's not just going to be the one spot?
Yeah, so the one, that one spot, that's kind of a standing, that's like a freestanding one. But then there's, there's room for it to be put into created in a bigger size, and that would go into the kiosks, maybe with some additional information in it, too.
And there, there is that QR code, but my, my thoughts were, I agree with Sarah, is right where he had it put. I believe it's right by that sob garage, and there's like zero parking. So I'm wondering that, you know, the, the main parking lot, triangular shaped parking lot, I would think it'd be a great spot to have it on the side of the parking lot, you know, facing the, the three you know, oxygenator fountains. You know, because, you know, that's where most people park. You know, they kind of wander up. Now, the QR code would help you, you know, scan it as you walk in, and the hard copies would be you know, there's hard copies, but pamphlets are sort of like 20th century kind of. And the QR would help, but I would think in a parking lot, it'd be a great spot, even though you're past the Pollinator Pathway, you can, you know, still walk back. Is there going to be a trail along the water's edge along that small lake? To the north side of the, the rotary there, I wonder? Little dirt path going to the Pollinator Pathway, or so people could walk. And they also may dump garbage there too, or litter, but that might be a nice walk. But then again, there's money involved with doing that.
Hey Mel, how much are the signs, how much do they cost to duplicate, though?
Um, well
Maybe John would know, have a better idea on that one.
Yeah.
It depends how, it depends how you're making them. I, I know that this is the company you mentioned has a special system, but they wouldn't cost that much to digitally print and put on a background and put up. I mean, that's not, that's not a big thing.
First ones off, just duplicate them if they're not that costly and put them at, you know, two or three other locations. I was down there today, and a lot of people park, and then they go from the parking lot and they walk around or go where they're going, so.
And there's multiple kiosks there where we just, if, if it was printed in a you know, climate friendly way, you know, weather friendly way, it could just be put up on the kiosks. I mean, they put up those kiosks for the construction, so they take down the construction posters, there's room for something else.
Yes, right. There's room in there for something else. And I know that, you know, John has made some really great weatherproof signs for the Aspetuck Land Trust that are out in all weather, and they're going on their second year, and they just look great. And, and they are actually signs that Don Watson designed, too. So, so yeah, it's likely that, you know, we can get a conversation going between Don and John and you know, figure out the best way, you know, material to print up, print them on.
Actually, if you could do that, digitalize the signs, there's that kiosk by the waterfall, which has been there a while, and I'm assuming they wouldn't take that down. That'd be, you know, another great place to put it. Having multiple sites, because this is really, that's really a cool, you know, a cool park. When I came to Trumbull the first time, that and the trail were my favorite spots to walk. Because it's a cool place with all these things we're doing. You know, the town is doing, you know, that'd be great to advertise it in more than one place. So if that was the case, you know, a sign saying entering by Yalesso National Park, and then you have the details elsewhere, you, you could read the signs. You know, maybe a kiosk at the main park in by the waterfall as well. If, if that can be done, there's money for that.
Yeah. Yeah. So that, that other kiosk over there by the waterfall, too, and then the, the, you know, the metamorphosis one, that's kind of in a kiosk over there. So so yeah, there are these specific sites throughout the park that Don and Dimitri have kind of earmarked for for signs. And then, you know, each one of those locations, for example, the the meadow area. Because the, their kiosks are, are big areas, we could have the map there with the sign that says you're here now. And then down below, there's, it, it would allow for more space to, to get people to understand the plants that are there and the pollinators that are showing up and so, so this is kind of an interpretive trail. That's what Don Watson calls it, an interpretive trail that brings you from place to place. And I think that and we could really use your help, Richard, with the the QR codes as you go through each from one section to another. Like, we don't want to be over with signs and brochures. We can get each site, you know, with a, with a QR code linked to a landing place where we can have all the information about that site.
I mean, it could be the simplest way, have one QR code linked to a town website with what you just presented. But then each, each station was numbered, you know, one through whatever. All you need is like a four by four post or something with a number. You can have a QR code also there just for the same you know, sign, but you know, if you had the QR code and the map, you could go to, you know, site four, which would be labeled on the ground, and oh yeah, here's site four, you know, brief discussion about it.
If you have, if you have Don call me, I'll be happy to do these signs just for the cost of materials. They won't be expensive at all.
Oh, that, yeah, that would, that would be, that would be great. And then we can get the, you know, the right size of them and yeah, maybe we should have get together on a meeting with, with Don and, and just, you know, share through, I mean, Dimitri's going to really, you know, I think this is like his prize. This, this park is his, his prize. It's a culmination of like 38 years of work. So it's kind of like an opportunity for him to, to celebrate all the work and get people to look at it from that bird's eye view, which, you know, normally you don't see it that way. And it's just a, it's a, it's kind of a cool, you know, opportunity, I think, for us to to do that. So, so that's great. Yeah, that's great, John. And I'm just, you know, I, I have gotten so many. Oh, here we go. Here we go. Here it is. Found it. Let me open the, I'll share the screen, and then I can open the other kiosk sign now that Don worked on. There we go. So here's the one. So this, he just put, he just does this, but I, you know, I'm not standing there. He just took this as
Yeah.
He just put us in front of this sign that doesn't quite exist. So here, so to answer your question, Sarah, here is with that sign.
I, I thought you were just saying that there would just be the one side on the other side of the bridge, and I just thought that was sort of an odd placement, but if it's going to be multiple places, that's great.
Yeah, and, and you can see that this, this, because he's measured out this sign, it's bigger. So this will give an opportunity to add more information down here. More pictures, whatever we're looking at. Let's just say that's the wet meadow or something. And we can do panels that go in here in the wet meadow, and then the QR code that takes you to an even deeper dive into the biodiversity of that spot.
And, and Dimitri has approved that this is, he's okay with his kiosks being taken up with this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we walked the park, and this, you know, and I actually did speak to him today. So he did call me and just said he loves this, he really loves these signs. He absolutely loves this sign. And he likes the opportunity to put them into the kiosks and have them just kind of a more formal thing. So so whatever, they, they will be sheltered, of course, but you know, there's materials that John can you know, I know he has provided for us at the land trust that are super weatherproof. So these are once they're printed out, they can be really resilient and last for a really long time. So
Signs that John put up. You know, three other QR code signs, you know, those have held up well over the past, I guess, year and a half.
Yeah, so, yeah, so it's kind of fun. It's a fun, it's a fun project. Oh, oh, you know, he put this whole other thing together. I mean, Don, Don is like an amazing guy. He put together a mailer an opportunity for a mailer. Let me share my screen again. It's just like show and tell. I should have had this all pulled together. So this is an 11 by 17 mailer that Don, you know, because he does this for a living. So you know, environmental education. So this is an example of a mailer that could be, it folds up, be printed and folded up, and then mailed out to people. Or they can, you know, order it, or it's a little big to print out. But it, let me, let me zoom into what he put down here. Oops. Move up, move up, two fingers, two fingers. There we go. Okay, so he put this chart in here. This is just an example of something that can go in here, and this was you know, checking off the trees and shrubs, pollinator habitat, waterside buffer, and then going to each one of the areas of interest in the park. So the waterside buffer, for example, has native trees and shrubs. There's also pollinator habitat there, and then there's you know, waterside buffer plantings that are there. You know, just, just to show that these areas all depend on biodiversity of you know, they all need water and habitat for pollinators and then native trees and shrubs. So so this was just an example of something that Don said we could work on. So, so this is clearly the kind of project that will be you know, what we can continue to work on this through the winter. I mean, this is clearly something that you know, I, I think this is just a great thing for us to be able to contribute to to the town. So, so, so pretty good stuff.
Now, who would the mailer say be sent to? Would it be upon request, or would it be? The mailer goes.
I don't know. I mean, I think with the, you know, challenges we've had with the cost of mailing, I can't imagine the town wanting to invest in.
I have this handy, and this is the Paquonic River Valley thing. I picked this up from a a spot in the library. In the library, they have, you know, a thing that's like an easel that stands up with a whole bunch of them in it. So there's a ways you can mail, you can print things. They obviously have to pay for the printing, but then you don't have to pay for the mailing, and only people who are interested pick them up.
Yeah, and those fall up, fold up to be kind of like a
Yeah, I mean, this is, I mean, this is a big one, but this is how it was displayed. But it's bold. I mean, it's a big thing. Yeah, well, that's pretty cool. It's very cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if they do money, you know, for something like that, this would be, that would be something we could work on, and then we'll have the actually, right next to this were the hikes in the, from the parks are about the the Public Health Department puts together Trumbull Treks from some of the parks. It was on the same display at the library.
Oh, cool. All right, that's, that's great. So
I did not pick those up.
All right. So that's good. Let me so, you know, I'm going to do is put together a little, like a folder for everybody with just all of the, the progress on this project and send it to you so you can get your own visual on it. So any, any questions on that? Okay, so that's, that's Twin Brooks. So I, I know that Tim, you were trying to call Dimitri today. And so then I was trying to call him, and then he did call me back, because the last couple of weeks, he, he's been binging me on this project. So he when we talked, I talked to him today about the Thousand Trees while we're still on that subject, doing things in the future with that, like planting. So he said he does not have the capacity to put additional trees in this fall. Potentially the spring, however. And he made a suggestion. I know we had talked about adding to that location where the first trees went. But apparently doesn't want to, you know, completely fill that up, that area up with trees. And I think he, he said what would be really great for us to work on is to look at that river, you know, you come over the bridge and you're standing over the river, and that is truly a riparian buffer there on the river on both sides of the bridge as you're looking, and that needs to be replanted pretty badly. So we can focus on that. You know, it would be different, a different suite of trees and shrubs, and maybe some smaller canopy trees and things along the river, and they're up high, so you can see the top area. But he said, you know, that would be a great next step for planting in Twin Brooks in that, in that area. There's some tree areas that come down to the river and then planting along the river. So that would be like a true riparian buffer. So it wouldn't be all trees necessarily. I mean, it'd be a variety of trees, but creating that that layered effect of you know, trees along the river with the buffer of native shrubs. I think that'll add a lot to that area. The birds will just bird populations will go wild if we do that. So
But when he says capacity, where he doesn't have the room, or he doesn't have the manpower to plant, or what, do you know?
Manpower, labor.
And so he'll have the labor in the spring, or And so he'll have the labor in the spring, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So that would be a site walk with him, myself, and whoever wants to go, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then plan it out for early spring like we did last year.
Yeah.
Okay.
In the meantime, what we, what we can kind of do is um you know, we could do a site visit there, see what's along that river now. There's big trees that are there already, but just enhance saying what's there. And just planting more stuff in there um gives people an opportunity to see what like a healthy riverside buffer should look like, getting all the invasives out of there. Which he said that's something they can work on in in the winter, is, you know, getting the invasives out of there.
So is the spot on the river when you just go right over the bridge and start coming around the, right before you start around the cul-de-sac or the traffic circle? That right side area where they filled in?
Yes, so the walking, the walking bridge. So I'm sorry, the walking bridge, not the other.
Okay, all right.
So the walking bridge is where you really have a great visual on the river.
Okay.
And that's a really cool spot to stand. So in either direction, we can play. So it's the walking bridge again. So it's kind of where this welcome sign is, and you go over the bridge, and then that would be um the next project for planting more trees along there. I think that area is just really needs trees badly. It looks like a bomb went off. I don't know what the heck happened. You know, from on the roadside of the river, like there's White Plains Road and there's the Veterans Memorial. It's just like dumb trees there at all.
Didn't they cut down a lot of trees there that were diseased?
Yes, they had um a lot of the um ash trees there. They had the Emerald Ash Bore, just did a number on them. So he had tons of ash trees that were, that were dead, and so took down. So but he left some snags there, I guess, and that's kind of where the eagles are hanging out. There's a lot of raptors in there, but um but yeah, that that area, I think, could definitely use some trees, but along the river is what he was kind of thinking of. So um
So I mean, it's just, like selfishly, I want everything to happen at Twin Brooks, because that's where I spend all my time. But um, you know, we did the first project in Twin Brooks. Does it make sense to consider other areas of town versus doing the second project in the same location? You know, something that
What I would say is, you know, he's very amenable to this. So, you know, the first project went off relatively without a hitch, with a lot of input from the Parks Department as far as labor. So what I'd like to do, and that's, it's a good location to get planted up, and then try to really start to uh get the town, meaning George, also amenable or agreeable to start to plant, you know, street side trees and then other locations. So
Ready to consider. I guess that's kind of where I was going. He's not ready to consider street side trees.
Well, yeah, we kind of started with the low hanging fruit, no pun intended, uh kind of understand how these things go. So if we show that we're successful, I went down and looked at the trees today. They look pretty good. We had a wet summer, luckily. Uh, we can, you know, and the town is funded it, so you always want to show, hey, the money is well spent. You build a reputation, and usually it becomes a revolving, or year to year, they budget you, and you kind of, you know, you kind of plan it out. So uh we're still building credibility. The first phase was relatively easy, so I'd like to continue with that. Have another year of succession and then kind of start to move them in a different direction.
Okay. And you know, when you talk about how you were just there and it was a wet summer, did we, are you you, I guess, rather than we learn anything that um, you know, was there anything that we, you know, should learn that we do differently next time?
I don't really think so, you know. For the project that was done, I think it was pretty successful. Like I said, we were lucky that it was, you know, that we had a wet summer. Uh, you always want to do more. You want to be able to clean up around the trees, make sure the mulch is fresh, you know, all that's good stuff. But he's got a million things to do. So I would say overall, the project was successful. You know, I'm not going to say I was unhappy. I would add it's maybe some different types of trees, but overall, it was successful. It's a municipal project. Let's move on to the next phase.
Okay.
Yeah.
Actually, had someone asked me, why do they put in those trees and take part of the meadow away? And I was like, it wasn't the meadow, just the goose poop.
Yeah, there's a lot of geese down there, but it used to be a soccer field. So they were upset when uh powers to be took away the soccer field. So, you know, it's, it's, we're moving in the right direction.
No, it's great. I love it.
As far as the municipality and getting labor from the Parks Department, it was, it was a good thing.
Yeah, and and you know, the trees, when I gave the list of trees to Don and Linda they were beginning to do their work on it, they, you know, they questioned some of the species. Most of them, with the exception of one, are native, but um not necessarily New England native and um but it's a very wet, wet site. So there were some, uh, I think one was like, oh, oh, a willow oak or something like that, like species that I were native, but not that I hadn't been familiar with.
It's a willow oak, yeah.
Oh, yeah, because it's a really wet, wet location. That floods, because it's just low lying. And and so we, you know, kind of allowed him to choose the species that would adapt to that site and deal with the flooding there. So um
Yes, overall, you gotta take the winds. There was a wind, let's
I, I mean, I, I know it was a win. I was just wondering if there is that, you know, if we had taken the time to really reflect on what went well and what didn't, and you know, what small changes to consider for next time.
Yeah, sort of like, we're dating right now. We're still dating, and we're still, you know, we like each other. We're holding hands, and we're gonna move it forward.
Okay. Second base next year?
Uh, well, let's see, we'll see.
Oh, my god.
But Dimitri was very cooperative. They did a great job. The trees were ordered. They were delivered from upstate New York. It's a very reputable company. The prices were reasonable, well, reasonable. Uh, and when I under, you know, I understand municipalities, it was, you know, it was a win-win.
Great. Yeah, overall, you know, they, they kind of went in at least with not, not a lot of grumbling, at least that we heard of. So that's good. So anyway, uh, so that's, that's great. Thank you, Tim. Thanks for your uh, and I'm glad that it's moving forward and we have more money. Um, so no planting for this fall. And I think uh the goal is to have like, maybe if we could shoot for Arbor Day twenty twenty four, kind of as the time for some sort of ceremony there or celebration. And by that time, hopefully, we'll have the pollinator um meadow in that, that will be planted probably November as a winter planting. So we'll see if that comes up. So um, let's see. Oh, so I also shared with any, so before I move to the next topic of the P and Z regulations, does anybody have any more Twin Brooks discussions? Nope. Okay. So um I sent all of you the brand new um from this month approved regulations for um for erosion. Let me see. I'll pull it up. I sent you the budget. I sent you but there it is. Erosion control regs. So I'm just gonna show you the one that was like the working copy. So this way you're, you're clear with what was added. Um, if you remember, we were looking at um a document that, that I mistakenly thought was an approved clear cutting regulation. And after an entire year of trying to get that changed from, I don't know, twenty five percent to fifteen percent grade. Jim told me that that was never approved. That was a proposal from the consultant, and that's what we were working off of, and that doesn't even exist. So what kind of took us back a hundred steps, because we realized we didn't have any um regulations for uh sediment and erosion control. So um after a lot of work, and Jim has been kind of, is working on this for a while, he got wording um that was very acceptable um and very impactful uh going forward in terms of um preventing sediment and erosion. So the S and E plan, which is a sediment and erosion control, shall be submitted for approval by the town engineer for any of the following. This is the first time this is going to happen. Development of land when the disturbed area of such development is cumulatively more than one half an acre. So that's kind of like a pretty much close to ten thousand square feet. The removal of trees on steep slopes, meaning slopes that are fifteen percent or greater in grade. That's a big deal. That's a big deal, because whatever we had still was like uh, uh up to forty percent, which is ridiculous. So this is gonna be anything greater than fifteen percent. The clear cutting of the land um meaning a practice in which most of all trees in an area of ten thousand square feet or more are uniformly cut down or when requested by the town engineer. So this has gone into effect as of um three days ago, actually. And there, they, there was always an exemption for single family dwellings um historically. And I so they added this unless, unless otherwise required by the town engineer. So it's going to go to the town engineer first, even if it's a single family dwelling. The town engineer will decide if they need um, if that house. Now, this entire process was like the catalyst for it was a single family dwelling on Valley View that um started to be built in October. And um Pam uh has been watching the sediment continue to roll down the hill onto the, the trail, the Chronic River Trail. She's taken pictures of it since October. It's gotten worse and worse. The town made the developer bring in a third party, an independent third party to oversee the process to prevent this continuous erosion. And of course, it's a steep slope. I mean, it's a steep drop that comes down. That's why it's called Valley View. And just a few weeks ago, um Pam went by and saw a good ten inches of sediment that had come down, spanning an area of probably twenty feet, just slid down. So she took pictures. We sent them to the town engineer, and we'll send them to Tatiana. And then uh later on, like the next day, she saw one of the contractors from up above was shoveling the dirt into wheelbarrows, going across, going across the trail and throwing the sediment down the other steep embankment directly to the river. So that was like the straw that broke the camel's back. Then um Tatiana just said, that's it. These guys are, you know, it's like one violation after another. So she called the zoning enforcement officer in to go over there. And so, you know, that whatever they were doing down on the trail, they stopped, cease and desist on that. But um so apparently it's being overseen at a much higher level than it was before. And so Pam said she hasn't seen any further erosion, so they probably, whatever they did up there, I don't know. But, you know, what we did was saw the end result of this kind of erosion on these steep slopes, and they'd taken down a lot of trees up there. So um I sent in a whole bunch of uh aerial GIS shots of before and after the construction, and you can clearly see the impact. So I think we had enough pictures. And uh pictures, aerial shots, and on the ground shots of what happens when you don't, you know, manage the land appropriately on a steep slope. So um so anyway, all of this stuff was added. Jim added, you know, everything in red here. So I was pretty happy. And it went through planning and zoning um a couple of weeks ago and passed. So uh, I'm not quite sure you can see that. Can you? Let's see. Let me share again. This is the new and improved. All right, so this is the absolute new erosion and control. So this was all new. This was all put in new, and so it was down here, the dates. It was posted August twenty first, uh past the sixteenth, and as of August twenty fifth, this is now a regulation. So any application that goes in. So we got our steep slope um and clear cut oversight. It's not a it doesn't prevent these people from taking down all the trees and building on something higher. You know, it's steeper than fifteen percent, but it makes every application have to go to the, to town engineer to oversee it first. Uh, and so it's just an opportunity to block any future developments like this. So um we should be pretty happy that we got this. It's been a year and a half of trying to get um this, this through, and it was kind of a no brainer, really. But uh, but it passed. So we finally have our steep slope and our, our clear cut regulation. May not be, have as, as sharp teeth as we would like, but it's definitely got teeth. So that's a good thing.
I'd like to say something about Valley View. I called, I called the town before that house was built. Because I was home one Saturday, and I counted sixteen dump trucks, and I'm not talking small dump trucks. I'm talking the long ones, and I don't know how many yards they are. But these sixteen huge dump trucks went by my house on Norwood Terrace and were filling in that area. So he raised the level of all that land. And I called the town, and I told them what I saw. And their answer was, well, he has a permit. He has a permit to put up a house. And I said, but should he be filling this land like this? He's taking all this material from another piece of property and filling this land. And they said, well, he has a permit. And I've seen that from the trail. And I saw your note from Pam, and I saw the erosion. And there had to be a retaining wall up there. There's no way that erosion is gonna stop from up there. And the other thing too is that he's dumping this on state land. The town didn't call the state?
Nope, not that I know of.
I mean, you know.
Yeah, I mean, that's actually a great point, because this was coming, and then they continued to throw it down to the river. And this was with oversight. They had um Bill Kenny and Associates was the third party that was overseeing, apparently unsuccessfully this. But um I did call um Dimitri to tell him that this happened. He didn't, I said, you know, you are responsible for maintaining the park, even though it's a state land. But that's a really good point, John.
That's a state violation. They can't just decide that they're gonna slap this guy in the wrist. That's a state violation. That's an NCON issue.
Yeah, that's a good point, John.
That is a good point, John. I didn't, yeah, I didn't even think to.
But Mel, the town is supposed to be doing, whether it's still under construction or they're done with construction.
Um, I think the house, no, they're still doing construction up there. I think the house is up there. Um, the house is up.
I mean, the town engineer or the building inspector, they're also supposed to be inspecting sediment controls. So, I mean, I don't know how often they get around it and stuff, but a standard is to, you know, inspect sediment control. But I guess when it gets so bad, I mean, I know they're busy and what have you, but I guess it's, I got so bad, it got out of hand. But you're right. I mean, they're really, it's supposed to be following the rules, but Mel, I just, I, I give you a lot of kudos for passing that. I mean, that's a, that's a big deal. It makes everybody aware of what they have to do ahead of time. So at least it's another, another set of eyes on, you know, development on the property. So.
Yeah, John, are they building any homes on that fill, anywhere near the edge of the steeper slope? Do you know?
Yeah, they, they, they raised that. I bet you they raised that land fifteen feet and then built a house on top of it, so.
Well, unless they have, have put, you know, deep footers in there. Houses are gonna start cracking at some point, way after people live there. But another thought is where that soil come? But another thought is where'd that soil come from? Was that from? In industrial site, you know, there could be easily, it's hard to get, you know, pristine soil in Connecticut. You know, farmland can have all sorts of residual pesticides. And it's from industrial land, that could have all sorts of. You know, nasty stuff that gets in the river. But you know, last time I checked, if you have sediment on a trail. Gee, I wonder if the segmentation control soul fence actually worked. I don't think so. I know like Mel and even in the Echo parking lot, you know, that was something that. You you brought the attention and, you know, I I called town. They hadn't even done siltation there properly.
No, no, I mean, we, you know, we've seen this so many times before when they don't even put up basic silt fences. So it's just, it's.
Is that a picture? Is that a picture of the guy moving the material?
Yeah, so this is how thick this is. Look at how thick this was. This came all the way down from the top of the hill and then he moved the stuff to this side and then threw it down to the river. It was like, alright, that's it. That's it, you know, it's just unbelievable. I I, yeah, trying to hide this stuff is just, so these are. These are the pictures we sent. There was a video. Pam took a video. It was just. You know, I just like couldn't believe our eyes that that this guy was doing.
Can you send me that video and those um? In those pictures?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, John's right. Some perhaps the the state should be made aware of that.
Well, I'm gonna see, I'm I'm not gonna lie, I'm gonna see NCON. The second Tuesday of the month at my meeting. And I wanna show them those pictures and give them that address. And then, you know. That's their job to uh to take care of that. Especially if he's he's dumping in, he he not only made a mistake. He didn't clean it up and he dumped it into the. Down the slope.
He's in violation of the siltation part of the regulations. You have the simplest case there ever was, you're throwing it. You know, but John, also when you mentioned that. You know, it'd be interesting for them to ask where the soil come from. There are there are some, the tests aren't free, but there's a fairly fairly simple. Tests that can be run just to screen for stuff and if they've, you know, they've. Taken contaminated fill and put down there, not only can that affect the aquatic river. It worst case could even affect the health of people on the trail. That probably won't be the case. You know, but. If that contractor could, you know, could potentially be in some trouble. But that's something that in industry, you know, we would have done something like, we would have, you know, we didn't allow. Soil come in industrial locations from unknown sites.
Right.
Because we, you know, why will, so that it's not uncommon to, oh, you got some free fill, just like Ray Best just.
Right.
You know, decades ago, here's our quote clean fill that has asbestos in it.
So these are the aerial uh shots that I took from GIS. So this was before the house. Was built. So this is the site. Here's the road. And you know, I like this cause it had the steep grade on it.
Yeah. And you can see a trail down there too, I believe. That kinda gray path is the trail.
Yeah, so um. Yeah, then then this this shot. This is the house.
Look at the fill there, the edge of the fill.
Yeah, and so. This area was cleared. Obviously you can see that it's kind of green now. There's the house, but. But this, these were my favorites. I mean, I sent all these to the town engineer and I'm like, this just from clearing the land, you can see. In this shot, I'm like, this wasn't touched. This was, this was the tree clearing. On a very, very steep slope that was allowed.
And actually that that down slope, kind of narrow tannish area could actually be sedimentation. You know, be run down there.
Yep, so you can see the impact of this. This is, you know, without leaves on the trees, but you can see. So so yeah, this was really interesting, John. So this is, this is like where all that fill came in. Cause it, cause it's just. All of this, like this whole area. So.
I mean, it was it was unbelievable the amount, cause I I walked the trail all the time. It was unbelievable how high. The pile of fill was. I mean, it was just ridiculous and the town didn't wanna know anything about.
I just don't, well, Mike Sareda is the developer.
I wouldn't buy that house. Unless it has an unusual foundation, that's a normal foundation, is built on fill. You know, that new owner is gonna have problems. It's a pretty good chance of that. Gonna settle on them.
I mean, Mike did Long Hill Green where Echo is and that that whole area. So he should. He should know, but it just, there was, I I think the oversight on this was unbelievable and. Got caught. This is the video, so I will.
Yeah, if you could send that to me and the developer's name and address, that would be great. I could always go down the street and get the address too, but.
Yeah, it's nine nine Valley View. So yeah, I'll send you all the. All this stuff. I mean, this has been. Just, you know, months of sending information and like do something, do something. This goes all the way back to July and. And Pam's been sending photos since October of the erosion as it began. So so I think her early shots that were set in, sent in is what. Encourage them to get a third party to oversee this, but. This this major erosion occurred while they had. Bill Kenny and Associates overseeing it. So I I just, I just don't get it. I don't, I just don't get it.
Yeah, the building department should, if that foundation isn't adequate. If it's built on fill, is a normal foundation. Um, that shouldn't even, that shouldn't even get a CO. I don't know if I can do anything, John, but if anything, like a geologist can do, you know, let me know.
You know, and and I mean, the thing is, the town, when they, first of all, they didn't wanna hear about the show. But when they saw the slope of the land, they with that house up there. They should have made him build an engineer retaining.
Mm hmm, great.
I I, you know, that would have solved the problem. They should go in there and now and tell them, well, you, this is a problem. You need to build a retaining wall. Cause once he sells the house. That's the the owner's problem. And that's not right, when especially when the town knows about.
Yes, yeah, so that's. That's just it, you know, now they know that that we know, that the public knows, it's publicly. You know, observable the damage that's been done and and it did, it come down to a state property. Like that, running down the hill, could have all been prevented. Just could have all been prevented, so. I don't know, drives just drives me crazy.
Except for that, that's, you know, almost vertical slope with the fill, where you need, where you need a retaining wall that's engineered. Below there, you can plant vegetation that has, you know, deeper roots that all help keep the soil in, so you don't need to plant oak trees. You know, to keep the erosion, but you need to plant a lot of shrubs. But those aren't gonna keep, you know, that the front of that fill from sloping down. You could plant a million trees. And that's still gonna drop. It looks like maybe the. Steep in the angle of Repose. At least in that one view, which means it's not stable enough not to slide. But you know, you have soil. Called soil affluxion where soil moves downhill. If you look on a hillside, you see trees leaning downhill. That's because the soil is slowly over tens of years, a hundred years moving down slope, but. Ah, that's a natural hillside, but fill. Boy, that our building apartment could be in. I don't know, I wouldn't wanna be a homeowner at that home unless they've done something correct.
Yeah, I mean, you'd have to look back through the application itself and. You know, soil tests and all that. I mean, that's all on file. That's that's all available for people to. To look at, to see the soil tests that they did.
You know what, Mel, do you have the address for that? For that specific home by any chance?
Yeah, it's nine Valley View.
Nine Valley View, okay.
Yeah.
And that's a house in the photo?
Yeah. Yeah, so the house is there.
Could you send me that photo just?
Yeah, I'll send you guys the all that, all that fun stuff. And I'll send you kind of the overtime. Increase in erosion that. That Pam photo she took of the erosion coming down the hill too, so.
How does the new ordinance stop or? I mean, cause it's a single family home, it may be exempt anyway, but. Like, how how does the new ordinance really, you know, stop something like this in the future?
So the way hopefully it would work is even if it's a single family home, it. Not necessarily exempt, cause it still has to go to the town engineer will decide if it's exempt. And when. They'll they'll look at the slope. The first time we're gonna, you know, really have them looking at a slope greater than fifteen degrees. Uh, any clearing there, so that that would require. A permit and the the trees that he took down, the clear cutting of that slope that was greater than fifteen. Would have also required a permit and it's not likely, we would think it would not be likely that a grade like that, which. Was easily of the forty degree. Grade based on the soil that was the type of soil that was there. We just say, you know, that say a retaining wall has to go there. Cause the the grade is too steep, something to protect that slope. You know, and and just a basic silt fence wouldn't protect it. So. So it would have had to have gone before. The town engineer. And the it would be the responsibility of the town engineer then to. Stop it or make recommendations. To prevent this kind of erosion, like putting a retaining wall in. That's just.
I mean, this is really a good. It's not perfect, but it's a very good, it's a good accomplishment. You know, don't let perfection get in the way of the good. The only limiting factor is. Uh, unless otherwise required by the town engineer. So it's up to, you know, will the town engineer actually do anything? That's the whole, but that's the, that's the way life is in this town and. You know, probably most towns in Connecticut and elsewhere, it's up to, you know, do they wanna actually. Do these things or are they afraid of being sued as a town?
Yeah, I I don't know. So this is, this is a. It it's really about the the safety of the residence and, you know, and the. House, the health of the ecosystem there, the health of the river and the safety of people who are gonna be in that house. You gotta. Now it's just like full backyard will slide down the hill. So yeah, so it's kind of just like a, you know, it's like a safety net. Like a safety net for applications like this will go before the town engineer. And there'll be a flag there that, oh, is this greater than fifteen percent slope? Oh, is there, are they gonna remove trees there? Because that, you know, is more than a hundred feet from the river. So that wouldn't even go before. Even though they're, you know, sliding, the the slope is sliding down into the river, it would never have gone before inland wetland. Planning and zoning obviously didn't. You know, worry about this. So. You know, we're just throwing safety nets in or breaks in there, you know, kind of put a break in there to to slow the process a little bit. So.
Just out of curiosity, is this the end of the P and Z regulations? I mean, this is Article ten. Does it mean that the all the regs are completed? I mean, they've been working on this since before COVID.
Oh, yeah, no, they haven't done anything. This we just, because I just kept poking them. They just put this in. Um, and Jim has been putting, you know, working on this. Side for a long time. Uh, well, at least for a year and a half, cause I remember talking on the phone with him last summer about this. So I just, so they've done nothing else. There's nothing else has been up updated.
So but we have Article ten of, how many articles there are, but at least we have Article ten, so.
Soil and, you know, sediment and erosion control. Did they did that? This is where, and it was a good way to get this in because. The feeling was they would, the Planning and Zoning Commission, the way it is made up now, they would never have gone. For restricting or or. Preventing building on a slope of fifteen percent or more or clear cutting of trees. They would have never. Have gone for a complete restriction of it. You know, so, which I thought they had, but they didn't. So this was a way to get it in. Um, so it's a regulation that has to move to into engineering.
And that mean, if they haven't updated the other parts of the P and Z. Does that mean if they approve Article ten, that Article ten is in law? As of, I guess, as of August twenty fifth, does that mean that somebody going? Yeah, they have a proposal that tomorrow has to follow this then?
Yes.
I guess, okay.
Yeah, and it was approved unanimously. So P and Z voted on. And and the change, it's an amendment to. Uh, so it was easier to get an amendment of an existing regulation and to put a brand new one in. It was hardcore. So this is one good step.
I'm gonna check, we do have a slope or two in Trumbull that's fifteen. Percent or more, last time.
Yeah, and so really my contention is that most of the properties that are are able to be developed that are. That still exist, not many left, are very steep and wet. And that's why they haven't been developed. So that's where, you know, the the the. The group of applications that are gonna come for new houses like this before. Our land use boards are gonna be on very challenging landscapes.
But this regulation also affects redevelopment, right? Not just new development?
Yeah, yeah, so any applications, yeah. Yeah, that come in. So. Yes, very interesting.
Yeah.
So. Let's see, then the other stuff. So we kind of talked about. We talked about Thousand Trees, no planting until spring, Riverside and Twin Brooks. Oh, so the only thing Pam had said she wanted to offer up was. She's been contacted by a couple of folks. One is a teacher at Hillcrest and one is the Long Hill Garden Club. They're very interested in helping us with the Thousand Trees. For Trumbull Initiative. They they expressed their interest, so Pam said we should really think about. How we can do that, like what, you know, do we work on in addition to planting these trees, like a native tree sale? Or activities around a native tree sale. And so she she proposed that maybe we could do a, like a subcommittee. And Tim, you know, is pretty much, you know, leading this Thousand Trees thing. Initiative, so maybe we need, it's time to get some more people on a subcommittee that are not commissioners. Um, but people from the public who are willing to work with us on this. And the same goes for Pollinator Pathway. So maybe having two subcommittees in under under conservation, cause we're really the only commission that's gonna be looking at this. Pollinators and trees and native. Plants and landscapes and all that, so. Um, so what do you? Think about that she has offered, Pam has offered to, you know, do any subcommittee that. We think is necessary. So what do you think about? You know, recruiting maybe more people, doing more outreach to the public to get them involved in a subcommittee.
I don't have any issue with it. It's just, you know, when people are interested, like the. The, I guess, the Long Hill Garden Club you were saying?
Yeah.
And the teacher from Hillcrest, it's like. You know, kind of what are your ideas? What do you guys wanna do? You know, let's, you know, if it's planting trees, let's, you know, that I'm all for it, so.
It's a good idea. I think, you know, because like Sustainable has a couple of people who are not official, you know, members. But are on, you know, most of the Zooms. Uh, so that could, that's probably a good idea. The barrier. And now do the, I'm assuming that the town rules Barbara don't. Do they have any restrictions on having non. Having nonofficial. Uh you know, Conservation Commission. You know, people to help you out.
No, because it would be um kind of a working group, for example, so. Um, early on, when the Conservation Commission was created, the first thing that we did was to form a working group for GIS. Because we didn't even have GIS in the town then, um was two thousand nine uh. And so we did a working group for of GIS uh for GIS, so there were people who were not on the commission who were on the. GIS like Richard White, and he's he's a GIS specialist, so he was a great person to have on the. Working group, so um so we can do the same thing um. Kind of with the with the trees, the other thing with a thousand trees for Trumbull is um Pam has applied for. A nonprofit status, so five oh one. C three um and she got it uh incorporated as far as as. She could, and now we've reached out to the town attorney to help us just continue that process, so what that would mean would be. Um. You know, it's a town initiative. But it would be a nonprofit status, so people could donate to it, so it would be a place to hold. Donations, so if they have fundraisers or native tree sales or something like that, it would be held by. The nonprofit, not. By the town, so this way when there's changes in administration um can hold its. Kind of hold its own money. Um and do its own own stuff that like the Trumbull Nature Center. Um, they have, they have a five oh one C three.
Wh- what's the name of the five oh one three C? Does she have a name for it or?
Yeah, it's a thousand trees for trouble.
Oh, okay. That's pretty easy.
So she got approval from the state of Connecticut, and I guess the next step is to um get some federal designation, and so with that, she needed. Um, an attorney, so we reached out to the town attorney to help us just today. So we'll see what happens with that. Um. So that was it, creating a subcommittee for that, um Tree City. As you know, we we were named a Tree City and. The Arbor Day Foundation sent a plaque and a flag and. All kinds of fun things which were lost for about a month and a half until they found them in Dimitri's office. So. Yeah, um uh Dimitri said the plaque is really nice uh and and probably something that we should uh. Present to Vicky. Uh in some kind of formal way and have them put this plaque in Town Hall somewhere. So um so.
Will that be part of what we talked about doing in the spring? For the trees, you know, having an event at Twin Brooks for the trees, like as part of, yeah, so Arbor Day like to tree. Would be part of that presentation, maybe?
Yeah, maybe we should, we should do it then, um and, you know. I get, I don't know what the flag looks like, I haven't seen it, so I'll just pick this stuff up and. We'll see, I think what they want you to do, Tree City has all this merchandise stuff they want you to buy. So they want you to buy like big banners that go over Main Street. All that kind of stuff, um so they have. Other things that you can buy as a Tree City that you've been designated, but what they sent was the plaque, but yeah, that's a good idea. Um, uh uh you know, I to wait to kind of like a formal. Presentation would be good. I think that's a good idea on Arbor Day. So. Um. So let's see, we got that, um the other thing was the. Veteran Center. Um, remember, we had done the plan for the Veteran Center um around the. Edge of the lake on Katz's Pond, so that application went before inland wetland. Which included the landscape plan for that, so. It was approved by inland wetland um. This past month. So, you know, I don't think they have the money to build that place yet, but they're proceeding with um. The process at least. So it's gone through inland wetlands, then I guess it goes through. Planning and zoning after that, uh it is good that at least it's a town, it is a town building. But they are following through the land use. Um, per thing approvals. That everyone else has to, which is a good thing. Um. Yeah, I mean, gosh, we haven't met since March, so we've got a lot of things that Thousand Trees for Trumbull flyer was printed. Um, it's a threefold flyer, we've got a bunch of those um. I think they've been handing them out at the farmer's market, and then we got waterside brochures printed and. Uh um they were distributed to Pinewood Lake, and I think Janet's on here, yeah, so Janet Epstein is on here. Um. Um, Bill, can you bring Janet on as a panelist so she can? Talk about her ability, she she took all of these great brochures and went, literally got a team of people. And went door to door on, oh, Bill's not there.
I think we lost Bill for a minute, he literally stepped away just before you said that.
Janet sit tight in the light for Bill to come back. And then you can tell your story about Pine Wood Lake, so we had enough brochures um printed to do Pine Wood Lake. Uh Canoe Brook Lake, and then a couple of the other smaller lakes like Thrushwood, and I put them around Dogwood Lake too. I walked around Dogwood Lake, it's just like. Ten homes, so not not big, but the two major lakes um. You know, at least we got Pine Wood Lake, they got the information, and I think Canoe Brook, we haven't distributed them yet, we're looking for a contact person over there. Um, so those were printed, um John's uh team did a great job with. Those brochures and the tree um Trumbull Tree Flyers, they were. They came out great, so thank you, John, for. For that, it was fun to get all those um printed, and those were um out of. The budget, the the prior budget, so. I got him in like right under the. Fiscal year. Um. So I think. That was it on my agenda until Bill comes back and we can.
While we're waiting for Bill, any new information on Trumbull Center or Senior Center?
Yeah, the senior center, a friend of mine who's on the Senior Center uh Commission. You know, sent me a mockup, I meant to send it to people. Um, if you want, I could send that, it just shows a mockup and I looked at it briefly. Has some nice images, I'm not sure if it's been totally approved, but it looks like. They're not gonna build on the slope, it looks like it might be pretty good. You know, but I hold the, I reserve that to the the final. Uh, you know, detailed look at that, but I can send that, I'll send that to all you guys.
What about Trumbull Center?
Uh, Trumbull Center passed um through inland wetlands, uh was not a unanimous vote. Two of the commissioners voted against it because um it's still in the flood zone. Uh, and it still sits in, you know, the FEMA. Flood zone, so that flood zone itself and that issue is going to be a. Primary issue when it goes to planning and zoning. Why they're doing it that way, I do not know. Um, but this this whole um. FEMA flood issue is something that could um. Potentially delay the project for.
But they're not a hundred feet from that stream from what I've seen, right?
Oh. Not not only are they not a hundred feet. From the stream, but they are, they it sits right in like the major. Um flood area, and they actually, the developer. Um, kind of showed their cards accidentally because they had a plan for moving it out of the hundred foot setback, out of the floodway. Um, and they accidentally sent it. And then an hour later said, oh. Forget the man behind the curtain, this is the plan, so they had already done the work. They don't want to move it because they said they would lose sixty four parking spaces. Or something like that.
And they said it would hurt the visibility for the um the businesses at the end.
Yeah. And, you know, it's like, okay, it's very hard to imagine this because it's an abandoned. You know, no, nobody's parking there, so that would be sixty four cars that won't go. Flushing down the aquatic as far as I'm concerned, because if it floods, it will flood, it will, it will flood, and it'll hit. That building, the debris way um goes right on the edge of that building. So whatever's coming down the river will. Come down, it'll hit where the um. Like Jovi's is, it'll it'll hit the dance studio, go around that, and then the debris field will hit. The corner of that new building, so I wouldn't buy anything in there. So it's gonna go before planning and zoning, and they will um manage this whole FEMA issue, so there's Bill, Bill. Um, Bill, can you bring Janet Epstein on as a panelist? We want to. See her shining face. And. See if she can give us some feedback on her Pine Wood Lake experience. There she is. Hi Janet, we see you.
Hello.
So I. You're so comfortable, okay, so we got you, so can you um just share with us what, you know, happened with the brochures and your door to door? Experiences? Uh, I think you're muted.
How about that?
Alright, good.
So, basically, uh five of us went to a hundred and forty four homes. And we we were able to deliver the brochures and the letters. The letter from IWWC and Conservation. That went along with it. Um, there were some homes that were in the middle of construction, there was nobody living there, one or two other issues, and I think I sent feedback. To to you, Mel, Mary, and Tatiana about that. Um, what was it? Most of, most of my friends who were doing this are not great door knockers, so. They didn't talk to a lot of people, whereas I love to talk to people. Um, and I heard. Gratitude statements like this is awesome. Love this brochure, especially from people who were newer. And I also heard stories. Of. People. Cutting down trees in particular and the siltation, the erosion that. Is happening on. People's properties who are further down the hill uh on the road that goes around Pine Wood Lake. So there were a few people pretty upset about that. Um, I heard people who were telling me, don't worry, we have an application in to IWWC. Um, and as I said, a lot of anger about people who don't do that. Um, the other thing is. Although the letter. Um. Came with the brochure, some people do not. For some reason, don't connect that. The need to put in an application or at least contact Tatiana. To. Doing the planting that is suggested. I mean, I found that really interesting, one of my neighbors is an attorney, a state attorney, and she said, oh, gosh, I wouldn't have even thought of that. We've got this gorgeous brochure, we've got this letter saying any disturbance within a hundred feet needs to be. Whatever, anyway, so that's the issue, I don't know how to clarify it even more, there's no statement in the brochure. That references that because we, you know, it it was, I think it came from Greenwich or something originally, the the um original document.
Yeah, it was highstead, um highstead and red develop that.
Oh, there you go, yeah, highstead. Um, so somehow there's there's not a connect. And, you know, I contacted Tatiana, she gave me a great paragraph about, you know. How to deal with this. Disconnect, um and I can circulate that, you know, to four hundred households in our neighborhood. Um, because she is willing to go out to any home, any homeowner who calls her and to talk to them. Which I think is incredible. And and I would like to foster the, you know, the cooperation piece of it, rather than people feeling like, oh, my God. We're gonna have to have a, you know, an application to IWWC, it's gonna take forever. And that may or may not be the case, but it may not be the case, because she can make an administrative decision if it's something fairly straightforward. Uh on the waterside, and I think, I mean, I was just blown away with how how. Thoughtful and. Willing she is, you know, to be helpful on this, because we sure need it, we need, we need that help.
That's great, but that's a hundred percent right, that, yeah, she can do it administrative. Um, approval.
Yeah, I don't think people know that, but. You know, I'll I'll be letting them know.
Yeah, I think that's great, that's great that you reached out to her and she was so um.
Yeah, absolutely, and I don't know how we can. Let other people know that as well, I mean, I have a Facebook platform, but I don't know how else we can. Can do it, because as I said, the letter is right there. We put that right in the in the packet, but people are not. Connecting it. If anybody has any ideas, I don't know about you, Sarah, you got any thoughts on how we can have people merge the two concepts somehow? Anyway, think about it. Um, so that was, that was my one thought, the other thing is, when I try and pull up the brochure on the website and I put in. Um, repairian buffer. I do not get the brochure, I have to, I had to dig around, I mean, I happen to know, I spoke to Pam, she said that it's under sustainable. I would like to be able to put it in on the search. Window. And see it there, because a lot of stuff pops up, but I don't think the brochure does, I also think we need to have the letter. The new letter. Up there somewhere. It may be in, maybe to get at it in two different ways, through conservation and through inland wetlands, but. I want to be able to post both of those to all of the families. Um. In our neighborhood, we have a lot of people, and you know, I think it's fair to say, some of the houses on our list are not PLA members, they're they're neighbors, they're not members of PLA. So it's not only PLA. Reach those people.
You know, Bill, could, could we uh on those particular documents, could we add some more search words? You know, common search words that, you know, if you punched in a phrase, repairing uh. You know, barricade or, you know, a bunch of words that we could potentially come up with, so they did a search. On town website, those would pop up?
Um, I'm I'm not sure how the search function works on that, I know. Um. It's bad, I mean, it probably just looks at the file name and the file content, so. It should read the document.
Yeah, so it's a Trumbull Waterside Buffer, but yeah, whatever people would put in for a search. Word, um, you know, it, yeah, if we could put put that in the letter and, you know, into kind of like a. Lake community toolbox or something like that, so. Live in a lake community, you can go there and it'll have. You know, the letter, the brochure, any other information regarding. Living in a lakeside community.
Yeah, and actually, that might be a good thing to add to the website. And just have simple links to the documents that are already there. With conservation or building or sustainable or whatever, you you know, Jen, there's one more thing. I mean, I emailed you, you know, earlier today about.
Yes, yes.
The watershed pledge, that Mary Isaac. Um, you know, had asked me to do a. A Google Forms, that's, Google Forms is what Sarah had used, I mean, I can briefly show the draft, and I think. You know, it was decided maybe to do that in the springtime. But Jenna, this is. Is a pledge that'd be, you know, sent, it'd be available electronically. And people who lived along water bodies. Could, if so interested, could read the pledge. And then make a non regulatory pledge that, yes, will follow certain things. And one of the things in there could be what you were saying, that I will, if I uh, if I upset. You know, the area, I will contact engineering, I mean, I can, I can share that for a couple of seconds if you wanted.
Yeah, I'd like to see the pledge, so it's kind of like a pollinator pathway uh pledge, which says, you know, I'll do these three things. And I'm on the pollinator pathway, so can you share? You should be able to share them.
Yeah, let me just um.
Click button.
Let's see. Let me open that up.
Yeah, that's a pretty good um idea, was that your idea to do the watershed pledge?
No, it wasn't, it was Mary's. Yeah, Mary Isaacs, and she. You know, just basically, can you guys see that now?
Yes, yes, we can see it.
And so, I mean, all I did was, it was taken from. I've drawn a blank from, you know, as we do another location. Um, and I I short, this is a grafted course. But the idea here is this is the introductory paragraph. is this is the introductory paragraph on folks, you know, you just list some bullet points about what's important if you live along a water body. And then, you know, this is the pledge which you unofficially would click on. And it said, I protect, you know, the water, blah, blah, blah. And then what they, this is not complete. Um, but this gives you an example, they would click, you know, one or more of these that they would agree to, to follow in their area. So, you know, I don't know, Janet, if this is something which might help, but you know, they say if you, if people hear things a million times, they're likely to start to believe it and follow it. So just one more way to get across to people. But the, the thought was maybe the better time would be in the springtime. I mean, this could be finished, you know, relatively easily, and there is already um, a Google Forms website where this actually exists. Um, and also QR code which could be on, on anything that people could click on just to get to the pledge.
I don't know, I found these results on search.
Thank you.
Do, do we know how, how successful this has been elsewhere? I mean, we have, we have like a, a, we have people who, who say absolutely, definitely I'm on board. And then we have people say, you can't tell me what to do on my property.
Yes, absolutely.
I also wonder, looking at this, it seems really long and there are a lot of words.
Yes.
And I don't know, Mel, if you've learned anything from the Green Corridor pledge, I know that's really short and succinct and punchy um. If, if this is overwhelming for people. In the detail of the, you know.
Now, on this particular section, this is where they click on one of our box. The, the black font is what I shortened, the red is what was on. And I was just trying to make these one liners.
Oh, I see.
You know, so the red is just, you know, basically taken from the original document. And I'd only done the first two, just as an example.
Document came from, what town was doing this?
Um, yes, I'll just go check my notes here. Um, let's see.
Yeah, we've kind of found that with Green Corridor or Pollinator Pathway, it's like three things are.
Yeah, Glastonbury.
Ah, okay. Yeah, they do a lot of cool stuff there.
Yeah.
Glastonbury, yeah, it is a bit, um, it's great, but it is a bit long, but it, it definitely would engage people and, you know, maybe there's some kind of would be great to somehow incentivize people or create incentivize
Yeah.
them to do this, like they will get something for it, like uh.
Yeah, the, the basic idea is to have some words up here, just to say what, you know, give, give them some education on how to protect their wetlands and water bodies. The pledge basically says I care about protecting the quality of water, blah, blah, blah. And, you know, I agree on my property to do, click on these boxes. Um, and then just like Sarah's survey did, it'll it will automatically record the number of clicks for each of these, so we kind of get an idea. You know, which may or may not be useful, but you know, information is still information. But this is probably one of many different air ways to get across to water body residents. I mean, the, these are the folks who have you know, potentially the most impact. If you had to pick who can protect the overall environment the most and you only pick one, you might pick water body residents.
Yeah, it's true. And you know, the way, what Janet said was that there's clearly a disconnect, disconnect between the documents that, you know, one is the carrot and one is the stick. The stick is the letter, this is regulation and the brochure is the carrot. This is what you can do, but they're disconnecting that. Just like they're not connecting the fact that what they do on their properties affects other people, it affects the waterway and ultimately impacts our rivers and our Long Island Sound. It's all completely connected and they not connecting it in their head. And that's, I think, the purpose of this watershed um pledge, which I think is a really cool idea.
And what, what's not on there, but you know, Janet is right, what could help is add, add one of these boxes, maybe even at the top, i- if I um affect, if I cut down something or do something in a certain area, then I know uh to call the town engineer and here's the phone number. That might help. The ones who who tell us, no, I don't care about it, I don't want, you can't tell me what to do, they're hopeless, but maybe they're the minority. And as time goes on, there'll probably be fewer of them, but the ones, you know, Janet, you talked to, who said, geez, I wish I didn't know that. Those are the people who will then know what phone number to call maybe. So these are multi-step processes, you know, they'll take years and years, but it's, it's progress.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I, I think we're, we're certainly moving and hopefully we can change the culture step by step kind of thing. I think, I think a pledge is great. It's used in politics a lot. Um, and it's been demonstrated to be helpful. And I mean, it to make something short, like Sarah was suggesting, to go with the brochure, because the brochure covers a lot of this. For example, um, but you know, I think it's, it's worth thinking. I don't know if, if, if there are folks in Glastonbury who um can give us some feedback about how, you know, how responsive people have been, if it's, you know, made any difference or not. Can ask them maybe, somebody.
What I'll do is I'll talk to Mary, Mary Isaacs, and see if she's done that. If not, I could, you know, call them. You know, and just to see what, what the results are.
Yeah, see, this, you know, because it's a lake community, it's a very concentrated area and it would be kind of neat to test something like this. Out, like a healthy watershed pledge, and then the people that take the pledge um, get something, you know, I know like we have the little pollinator pathway signs that go in the mailbox, but post, um, you know, or Green Corridor, but, but this is really strictly to that concentrated um lake watershed area. Um, and people might wanna have a, a cool little sign on their mailbox post that. I'm in a healthy watershed or I'm Pinewood Lake watershed protector.
I mean, we have, we have a lot of streams coming into our lake, some of which are not in the Pinewood Lake association boundary, but they're out there and I certainly went up and down, you know, Henlock distributing those brochures there. And um, I also spoke to Marilyn Lord over at Canoe Brook. Her husband is the I guess, president of Canoe Brook, Jim Lord, I think his name is.
Okay.
And um, you know, I said, we'd be willing, or I certainly would be willing to help her distribute if she needs volunteers or any any, any other place in town also. I'm willing and I can try and mobilize my, my little group and see if they'd be willing to help if you need any help.
That's great. Yeah, that would be, that would be great. So um, are, uh, do you wanna continue to work on, on this? Um, this pledge a bit? Uh, Richard, you know, let's see what Glastonbury will ask Mary if she can find out what, you know, the response has been. But maybe if anybody, you know, wants to work on this with Richard, just to kind of pare it down and make it more impactful. Um, I, I kinda think this is a cool idea.
Yeah, what I'll do is I'll follow up on that. I think they have results, and then I continue to just shorten these. And then, you know, email the draft to folks and then, you know, see what you think about adding or subtracting, you know, from the text. Be, be, have it be more concise. This thing was actually pretty, you know, this was, this top segment is pretty wordy. Even though it still is a bit wordy, it's less wordy, but it could be even shortened more. Um, if I'll add a, add a note here. Um, Janet, do you have any words you could email me of what you think might be effective, based on handing out brochures? About how, what to tell people that, yeah, if you do this, you should call the town?
I mean, if you send me this, and I, I can certainly uh share what Tatana wrote to me. Um, I'm happy to help. This is so, so important. The number of violations is making me nuts.
Yeah.
I know, it's just, it, it's, it's maddening, really. I just, I don't, I don't understand it. I, I don't.
Do you mind if I ask you your email and I'll send you?
Sure, it's, uh, just use J E P S T E I N seventeen at Gmail. J Epstein, that's my name.
Yep. J Epstein. At, say it again?
Seventeen, J Epstein seventeen at Gmail.
Yeah, gotcha.
That's great. Thank you so much, Richard, for that. That, that, thanks for sharing that. Um, I really love this idea. I think that's really cool.
Thanks to Mary Isaacs also.
Yeah.
So, you know. But obviously it crosses, you know, the um, you know, both groups.
Yeah, this is great.
One more thing, I do have, uh, if anybody wanted to briefly see the um the town senior center, I can just show you maybe the map for you if anybody was interested now, or, although it is getting late, but I can pop that up.
You can email it to us if you want.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, let's see what, what's going on with that. So, um, okay, so that's that's all that I had on the agenda. Um, thank you, Richard, for that. Uh, anything else? Anybody wants to um, bring up, our next meeting again is September twenty-seventh. So we went this long stretch with no meetings, now we're gonna have two almost in one month, but it's good. We have fun stuff to do.
Well.
Got it, you have it.
Yeah, yeah, I, this is backtracking to where you started at the beginning of the meeting. Um, in terms of biodiversity and you, you mentioned the word, you mentioned invasives with regard to the Thousand Trees Project. Um, is there any interest in, in educating people about the invasives? Because we've got Tree of Heaven, we've got um the Japanese knotweed in Twin Brooks and not to mention, it's going crazy elsewhere. So my question is can we let, you know, teach people about it? Because it's, it's in, in the park and everywhere else, and maybe we can connect that at some point somehow.
Yeah, that is a great, I, I'm glad you brought that up. Um, we, so for the land trust, Aspartak Land Trust that I um, I work for, this, this has just come up as a new issue. We, we actually have a team of volunteers that are like an invasive task force and they go out into our properties and pull stuff out. But um, we just talked about doing invasive education to landowners, homeowners and the public, just um, and so I just, what I'd like to do is, I think this is a great idea. We have all of the, like the narrative for each one of the invasives, which have just been written up. Um, we just have to get pictures to link to them, so people can identify what Japanese knotweed is. Um, and that is kind of, that's blooming now. So that's a really, the, the knotweed is a good one to get um, out now. So that's a really, um, I, I love that idea. So what if we put together, is there anybody who might be interested in just, you know, if we can take the text that we've developed and then um it's kind of a tool of what to do, and identify it, what to do, and then just somebody would just have to pull up some really cool pictures and attach it to it. We could, you know, put, put that out on our um, you know, on Facebook or whatever, whether, whether we did it invasive of the month kind of thing. You know, each, each month we could do a, a different invasive, or during the summer season, we can do a different one every week. Um, probably got about six or seven species that are really tough in our area. So, um, I think that's a great idea, because before you start planting natives, you really have to get the invasives out and then plant as fast as you can. And if we're gonna start doing that in Twin Brooks, um, we can teach people how to how to get them out, because some of them have to be, you know, mowed down, some can be pulled, others just have to be cut. Um, if someone's gonna paint herbicide on, you know, a Asian bittersweet line, how to do that kind of thing. So, um, anybody interested in?
Yeah, if you, if you send it to me, I'll try to set up some documents with one each. And then I'll set up a brochure with all of them.
Wow, neat.
You can decide how you wanna set them up.
Okay.
You'd want a lot of PDFs?
Okay. Yeah, I'll say, I'll send them to you, um, with some photos, kind of like the um the one that Ham put together for the uh, the native plants.
Uh huh, okay.
Yeah, so Janet, did you see this? The one that, well, it won't be like this, because this is telling people, you know, what to but, you know, there's identification on the back. She's got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Um, on the back, you know, nine photos of invasives, their names, um and then, you know, could have a small uh paragraph or something about each one or a link to, you know, how to get rid of each one. So, so John, I'll send you what, um, what I have, because it was just written. So this is a
Yeah, that's fine.
Perfect timing for this, Janet, thank you. Perfect timing for invasive education. Um, so I'll, I'll send it to you, John, and maybe by our next meeting, we can have um, at least a a, like a blueprint and a first step, first draft. For that, for invasives. Okay, cool. Good, good idea. Great. Okay, so it is uh eight fifty. Um, anything else anybody has? No, I, I have a bunch of pictures and stuff to send to you guys. Um, uh, from Nine Valley View. And um, we, we can get some, you know, John, you can help us with that too, because I think that's a real it's turning into kind of a state issue. At least the state should be aware of it. So, um, all right, I will, uh, do I have a motion to close the meeting at eight fifty?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion from John, seconded by Richard, okay, and all those close the meeting, aye? Great, thank you everybody for uh, for coming tonight. I appreciate it. It was a great meeting, got a lot of good ideas from you guys. So, thank you. And uh, have a really good Labor Day weekend.
Yeah.
You too.
Yep. Happy end of summer.
Thanks for having me. Bye.
Bye bye.